Good afternoon all, I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. This workshop of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at 4:01 PM on this 11th day of May 2021 pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the governor's executive orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution. This workshop of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach will be conducted in person for school board members and certain staff members. However, due to the necessary health mitigation strategies in place, it's impractical and unfeasible for the public to attend this meeting in person. Members of the public will be able to observe the school board meeting through live streaming on vb schools dot com, broadcast on VB TV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It's the school board's protocol to break at 4:30 PM to prepare for the regular school board meeting to begin at 6 o'clock PM, excuse me, 5:30 PM. At 5:30, the board will conclude its informal meeting unless the board votes to continue until 5:45 PM. The informal session will conclude no later than then to allow the school board and the school administration to prepare for the regular school board meeting at 6 o'clock PM. With that, Madam Clerk, would you please announce those school board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In school board chambers is Chairwoman Rye, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Belton, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems. And attending via Zoom inside the building is Ms. Holtz, due to health reasons, and Ms. Manning, also due to health reasons.
Thank you. So, School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. Colleagues, anybody have anything to share? I have one short announcement of sorts that is a product of the Governance Committee, and it is in your packet, but it's a single sheet, a School Board Member Remote Location Participation Form. So, this is an outgrowth of our recent bylaw amendments to the bylaw that made distinctions between medical absence and personal absence. And, you know, the goal is, as a body, both collectively, and this is as much for committees. So, this form is, will be available online, and school committee chairs will also be keeping track of these forms. It's an easy way, rather than just an informal email to the school board chair, we're just going to be asking that when you do write, you submit this form. Now, that said, you know, there's obviously some flexibility with last-minute emergencies, but it's just to ask that whenever possible, with the 24 hours notice, as indicated in the bylaw, that this form be submitted. And follow-up questions to me or any Governance Committee members after tonight's series of meetings is encouraged, if there are any. So, with that, I'm happy to introduce our first workshop presentation of the afternoon, "An Achievable Dream Expansion." So, we have with us Ms. Tenille Bowser, Principal of Lynn Haven Middle School, Purvis Blake, Vice President of Achievable Dream Academy Newport News, and our own Mr. Tony Arnold. There you are. So, who's going to start us off, ladies and gentlemen? Okay, welcome, Ms. Woodhouse.
Thank you, and good afternoon. There we go, all right. You can tell it's been a while since I've been in front of the board. So, good afternoon Chairman Rye, Vice Chairman Melnick, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. I am Cheryl Woodhouse, Senior Executive Director of High Schools with the Department of School Leadership. I am pleased and excited to announce that this evening we will hear the update on the Lynn Haven Middle School expansion. In attendance this afternoon are Ms. Tenille Bowser, Principal of Lynn Haven Middle School, as well as Mr. Tony Arnold, Senior Director of the Department of Division Services. We also have with us this evening an Achievable Dream staff, Mr. Purvis Blake, Vice President of Academics, and Mr. Chris Middleton, Senior Director of Virginia Beaches for AADA. This evening, Dr. Vreeland, President and CEO, was unable to attend, but she is here with us tonight in spirit. As you are aware, Virginia Beach City Public School has had a long-lasting, strong partnership with An Achievable Dream since the establishment of a K-5 program at Sea-Tac Elementary School. In July of 2018, Lynn Haven became the host of the Middle School Years Program, and here this afternoon, we will share information around the high school program to begin with this upcoming school year 2021 through 22. So, at this time, I would like to bring to the podium Ms. Bowser.
Welcome, Ms. Bowser.
Hi, thank you, Ms. Woodhouse. Greetings Chairman Rye, Vice Chairwoman Melnick, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. My name is Tenille Bowser, and I'm the proud Principal of Lynn Haven Middle School, and will soon be the equally proud Principal of an Achievable Dream High School at Lynn Haven. Joining in this presentation is Mr. Purvis Blake, Vice President of Academics for An Achievable Dream. Today, we will discuss the public partnership that exists between Virginia Beach Public Schools and An Achievable Dream. We'll also discuss the established educational program, expectations, and outcomes of the Achievable Dream at Lynn Haven. We will conclude tonight's presentation by sharing student perspectives, community outreach, and the classroom addition. I will now turn it over to Mr. Blake to discuss the unique opportunity we have in this public-private partnership.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Bowser, Ms. Woodhouse, and Achievable Dream partners with Virginia Beach City Public Schools to create the unique learning environment for our Dreamers. We operate off the VB CPS curriculum, calendar, and staffing. And Achievable Dream adds the additional resources to supplement the educational model. An Achievable Dream operates off a social, academic, and moral education, S-A-M-E, model. This holistic approach teaches the whole child. Here, you see a few aspects of the social curriculum, which includes character education courses, dress code, and clubs. Our academic structure includes extended day and school year. We begin our academic year in the summer with our summer intercession. For the moral component, we believe relationships drive results. We have a culture of high expectations and expose our students to field trips, onsite experiences, and many other activities to connect student life to the real world. For the 2021-2022 school year, our tentative high school hours will be 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Our school year will begin with summer intercession, virtually, from July 6 to July 29, Monday through Thursday. So, what should we expect from An Achievable Dream? I'm glad you asked that question. First, we will continue the same curriculum to include clubs, field trips, and exposure to many businesses and organizations. Our What It Takes programs provides our students with opportunities to interact with partnering companies once a week to learn about possible jobs and careers. We also begin in ninth grade with a high school transition program, which is called Mental Excellence. This course prepares our students for high school and college as they take college trips to our partnering schools, which you see here. SAT and ACT prep work also begins in the ninth grade, teaching our Dreamers test-taking strategies. Technology integration is and will always be a main focus at An Achievable Dream as we prepare our students for the ever-changing workforce. The benefits of An Achievable Dream do not end on graduation day. Each student receives $2,000 per year in college scholarships from An Achievable Dream. We also have partner schools who have identified scholarships and grants specifically for our Dreamers. Once a Dreamer applies and is accepted to those schools, they could ultimately attend those colleges and universities for free. Where was this when I was in school? We also aid in the FAFSA, college applications, and continued support throughout college. Our campuses include An Achievable Dream Academy, which is K through 5, and the Middle and High School, which is 6 through 12, and Newport News. In Virginia Beach, we have Sea-Tac Elementary and Achievable Dream Academy, which is full K-5, and Achievable Dream Academy at Lynn Haven Middle School, which is now full 6 through 8, and as Ms. Bowser proudly stated before, soon to be An Achievable Dream High School. In Henrico County, we have An Achievable Dream Certified Academy at Highland Springs Elementary School, and yes, that is the full name, K-5. And this summer, we will open An Achievable Dream Certified Academy at Fairfield Middle School, which will house our sixth graders. Here, we see a few highlights from our most recent graduating class at Newport News, and what we have to look forward to right here in Virginia Beach. We are extremely proud of our 100% on-time graduation rate. Ms. Bowser, proud and mighty Principal of Lynn Haven, will now tell us about the exciting next steps in Virginia Beach. Ms. Bowser?
Thank you, Mr. Blake. I'm excited to say that in Virginia Beach, we have a lot to celebrate in respect to the academy. For example, An Achievable Dream Academy at Lynn Haven Middle School is fully accredited. Attendance continues to improve in all grade levels. Students have participated in virtual field trips, which include both onsite experiences and cultural activities. One of the most valuable data points provided is that 94% of the parents and families would recommend An Achievable Dream to others. I think many are wondering what one can expect from An Achievable Dream High School. Dreamers will take a majority of their classes in the new building, but will also utilize specific courses offered at First Colonial High School. Dreamers will also have an opportunity to play sports at First Colonial's athletic teams, as well as participate in school clubs and activities. However, Dreamers will maintain a business casual dress code and continue to operate on an extended year and extended day schedule. When I ask our Dreamers their perspective, our rising ninth graders share what they are most excited about in An Achievable Dream High School. Dreamer Landon Bradshaw stated, "Sometimes people don't think you have a chance in life, but Achievable Dream always believes in us. They are helping us to succeed." "I'm excited to go to an Achievable Dream High School because all of my teachers, Ms. Sadler and Mr. Jackson, care about us. They are always trying to lift us up, which makes me excited to go to school and learn each day," said a eighth-grade Dreamer Juliette Brand. Dreamer Natalie Logan said, "I think the Achievable Dream High School will help me because my mom never finished high school. I want to finish high school for her and college for her. An Achievable Dream is helping me every step of the way." Next, we have a video that clearly articulates the power of this public-private partnership.
I think we're cueing the video.
That makes Achievable Dream successful in my eyes is the opportunities we have to make those personal connections with the students.
We value who the organization is and what it's doing for our students and for our staff. We feel supported, we feel valued, and our kids are thriving because of it.
One most impactful thing that Achievable Dream brings to our students is opportunities that they normally otherwise wouldn't have.
I feel like I would be the person that I am today because I didn't have the role models that I've had.
So, when it comes to the people that have impacted me, really, I can't really put it into people, because Achievable Dream is a family to a collective. It's Achievable Dream itself that's really make me probably, I would say, a good amount of who I am.
Since second grade, we've been moving up to this moment of going to high school. We're going to be the first graduating class of Achievable Dream.
This video is a great reminder that the work we do has a lasting impact on students. Next, we plan to share the vision for expansion with our community on Tuesday, May 18. We will first, we will first start with a 5:30 PM parent meeting, followed by a 6:30 PM meeting with the community at large. Community members will be able to submit their specific questions in advance, which we will build into the program and/or answer at the end. In the coming weeks, some frequently asked questions and answers will be posted to the VB CPS Achievable Dream page. Before I turn it over to Mr. Arnold for the classroom addition update, I wanted to address the why Lynn Haven question that we often receive. VB CPS Facility Services conducted a comprehensive facility sites assessment to determine the most appropriate long-term location for the program. As a result of Lynn Haven serving as the current site for the middle school program, it allows for the family structure of the academy to remain geographically closed. Lastly, due to the proximity to First Colonial High School, we can provide extended course options for students. Now for Mr. Arnold and the classroom expansion update.
Thank you, Tenille. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members. Let me talk to you a little bit about the project schedule and what is in our capital The project is a $12.75 million capital project that is fully funded. As a reminder, 8.75 million of that was, the remaining 8.75 was funded with reversion funds from last year's operating budget. As you can see from the programming and community engagement, for the better part of the past 12 months, we've been working with the staff and the community doing design charrettes. We're at about 65% construction documents, and the project is scheduled to go out to bid later this summer. Construction is scheduled to start early in the fall, take about 12 or 13 months to build this project, finish it in the fall of '22, move furniture in in late '22, and the current schedule calls for students to begin in the new classroom addition early in 2023. A first for us in my office, a socially-distanced design charrette. We had, we had two or three of those over in the Lynn Haven Middle School library, so you'll see some examples from in September and again in October, where the design team at Dills Architects worked together with a lot of really good young students, staff members, community members, family members, and central office folks, and Tenille's team to really program this classroom addition. Arrow view site plan of Lynn Haven Middle School and the proposed classroom addition, the classroom addition is what we'll call on the back right of the building, is about a 30,000-square-foot classroom addition. We're in the process, this spring and summer, of arranging to have five portable classrooms moved to the campus. They will actually be located on the left side of the building. As Ms. Woodhouse mentioned, the ninth graders are scheduled to arrive in September, so the ninth graders will occupy portable classrooms for this coming school year and in the first half of the '22-'23 school year when 10th graders come. Again, about a 30,000-square-foot addition. It requires relocation of the existing baseball field top right. An aerial view of the floor plan, again, it attaches to an existing hallway. We created an entry commons from the existing building. You can see flexible circulation space throughout the classroom addition. The classes, classrooms themselves are highlighted in light blue. A lot of natural light and outdoor learning space. That's one thing that we've learned over the past 15 months in our work is the importance of creating flexible spaces, not only inside the building, but outside the building. So, a lot of opportunities in and around this building. A flexible schola space, you see the administrative area kind of bottom right in orange, clinic to support the high school students, and kind of the lighter orange. But again, about a 30,000-square-foot classroom addition that we'll see start coming out of the ground this coming fall. A few renderings, you know, we wanted to define the entrance for the high school students, so you'll see a south elevation, which will be the main entrance to the classroom addition on the back right of the building as students get off the bus and enter the building. An east elevation kind of around the back right that shows you a lot of the natural light that'll be let into all the spaces. And then, a northeast elevation that shows the rear of the building, where we've provided a lot of opportunities for outdoor learning. So, it's not a large project like we're used to. It's about 30,000 square feet, but a lot of flexible space. We feel like the team worked together with, really well with the architect to make the spaces work together. It's not unusual to have middle and high school students together. You see that throughout the Commonwealth and the nation, where you'll have combined schools like this. This is a little on a smaller scale. But again, a very, very exciting classroom addition that we're looking forward to getting started later this fall. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the team to answer any questions that board members may have. Thank you very much.
Colleagues, Mrs. Franklin, sorry, I'm still trying to understand how all this works, but what was the size of the graduating class? Or has that happened yet? Or Newport News, yeah. And when is Virginia Beach going to have their first graduating class?
So, we will have our first graduating class in 2025. The first class right now that will be rising ninth graders are 52 current students.
Yes, that's, okay, thank you.
Ms. Owens. Oh, excuse me, okay, we have Ms. Hughes, Mrs. Weems, and then Ms. Owens.
I don't have so much a question as just a comment. I had an opportunity to see the program firsthand at the elementary school as a substitute teacher, and it was really impressive. You know, typically in the morning, elementary kids, they're excited, they're running. These kids were down the halls, they stopped at the doors to tell the teacher their goals. I liked the idea of the different grade levels having different colored shirts. You know, there's reasons sports teams and scouts and people like that are kind of in the same uniform. Everybody's rowing in the same direction. It was just, it was really impressive, and I'm really happy to see this expand. And I really hope that a lot of the principles that are used in Achievable Dream will kind of expand out even in schools where we don't have that specific program, because I think it's really beneficial. And thank y'all for everything that you do.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Weems?
Yes, thank you. An outstanding program. Before we started here in Virginia Beach, some of us, well, I guess, nobody that's here, I guess I was the only one, Dan Edwards and M. Davis, and I went to Newport News and really looked at the pro-
I'm here.
Okay, you were here, okay, okay. And looked at the program there, and it's just such a great, such a great program, so I'm really excited that this is expanding. My question was also, how many eighth graders do we have? You answered that, 52. And then with the sports and clubs, I know the hours of the Achievable Dream are a little bit longer during the day till 4:00. Is that going to hinder any child from participating? Or do most of our sports teams, specifically at FC, do they have a break? I think they used to have a break before, and then they start practice, but is that going to be a smooth transition?
We believe so, and also the way the class design and schedule design is, it will be, it'll just flexible enough to allow students to be able to leave if they need early for any athletic practices that are in place.
And then with, as far as getting those students from their building to FC, how is that going to happen?
We are actually still working through many of those things with transportation at this time.
Okay, okay. And with Newport-
I'm sorry, but we will have, you know, greater clarification around that. We're just still working through that process.
Okay, okay. Hopefully, we can help those kiddos obviously get to their sports team or club or drama or whatever they're doing. Okay, and with Newport News, how many, you've got great percentages of, you know, graduation and honors and advanced diplomas. What is the percentage or the average of how many students attend post-high school studies, two-year or four-year college?
Absolutely. And so, in Newport News, our 90 to 95% attend two- to four-year college. 3% to 5% go to the military, and then the remaining percent goes straight to the workforce. And that's where our What It Takes program and some of our jobs and careers exposure are exposing. A lot of ours go straight to careers or jobs with our partners, organizations as well.
Okay, excellent. I knew it was a high number. I couldn't remember how impressive that was, but that's very impressive. Okay, thank you, thank you so much. I'm looking forward to getting out there again and then looking at the program. And again, I will echo Ms. Hughes. I wish and hope that a lot of the things that we do in Achievable Dreams are copied throughout the system because they are very excellent, excellent ideas and philosophies for our youngsters. Thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, Ms. Owens, and then Mrs. Holtz.
Thank you. The comments and questions that were asked kind of encompassed my thoughts and what I was hoping to find out. I will echo what's already been said, that I have a little one who's doing the Achievable Dream program in the, at Sea-Tac right now, and I've had the amazing privilege to see live in the living room daily all of the activities and maintaining with the virtual field trips and different things that are going on, and I have been really, really impressed. So, I thank you all for what you're doing with that. I did have some questions about transportation, and it sounds like maybe that's still in the works. Do we know if we're expecting right now to be busing our high school students with the middle school students, or if there's going to be some separation with that?
I think all of those are questions that we all are asking right now, and you know, as all districts across the nation, probably the world, you know, with a slight shortage and butchers at this point, I think, you know, the one thing that our great partners with Virginia Beach City definitely find ways to support the program in any way that they can. And so, all of our discussions are around how to still make it work to maintain what we have for our Dreamers. So, I'm confident that we'll be able to be able to provide the best experience. We know this year we'll have to be a little flexible coming off of COVID and so forth, but eventually, we'll get back to where we need to be as far as transportation, but we're still working on those things now.
Okay, great, thank you. And I don't know if you have the numbers or, but I'm curious, in our elementary grades, how are, I don't even know what word I'm looking for, but where you start off with larger amounts of students, and yeah, how are we doing with retaining our Dreamers all the way through?
Yeah.
And if there's anything that, you know, in general, we should be looking at that is having us lose some of our kids from the program, whether it's opportunities with sports or whatever else is being offered that we need to continue to look at to make sure that we're doing what we can for the program?
Absolutely. The numbers are regarding our K-5, we are actually in a, you know, we experienced the same kind of decline that all schools did this year, but not at the same scale. And, you know, fortunately, with An Achievable Dream, we have staff members that call, we call our families every month, every single staff member is, they have an adopted family, we call Families, and they check on them, see how they are in attendance, purposes, and so forth, for so many wraparound services that we provide. And so, we're in contact with them, and as I stated earlier, relationship drives results, and so, we are really a family, and so, they look forward, but you know, you know that as being part of the family. But we have those, and this year, we are very proud to say, we held all of our recruitment meetings virtually, and it's one of the highest recruitment students that, recruited students that we have. And so, one good thing that we learned coming from COVID, that we'll be able to do it virtually and have high results. We have now about 57 students that have been recruited and accepted to our K-5 program, which is a high number for us, where we probably will be on a waiting list for some of our grade levels next year. Thank you for that, for that question.
Okay, Mrs. Holtz, and then Mrs. Anderson. Mrs. Holtz?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
You can.
Yeah. Part of my question has already been answered, but actually, I have three questions, but I think they can be rolled into one answer. Number one- Number one, is there a cap on enrollment? Number two, how do people, how do people apply to the academy? Are there parameters or can, do you have to live in a certain area to join the academy? And number three, can an eighth grader now who is not involved at all with the Achievable Dream, can they also apply to the ninth grade if they've had no experience with Achievable Dream? So I guess the question is, what are the limits and what are the boundaries of the school district? That's anyhow, thank you.
Thank you for your question. So first, in partnership with the MOU, our enrollment is 75 to 90 students per grade level for our students. Secondly, with our students, sixth grade is really the last year where we do a recruitment for our students, as those earlier years is where we tried to implement all of the social, academic, and moral aspects of the program. And so students, sixth grade is really the last year where we do recruit our students there. And the third question, I missed it. Oh, yes. And so two years ago, Virginia Beach City Public Schools opened it up to 26 other schools, which expanded our zones. And so if they live within those 26 school zones, transportation is provided for those students. Secondly, if they live out of that zone, they can still apply to the program. They would just have to provide transportation. And we do our applications through recruitment meetings, which start about January timeframe and run to about March timeframe, where a parent will come to a recruitment session in person or virtually, learn about the program, and then decide if it's the right fit for them and their family. Thank you for those questions.
Right now, I wanted to join. Where would they even find an application? Because I've never seen it.
Awesome. And so we just finished our recruitment processes aligned with the other academies within the school district, and so we start that early. Because there's so many wonderful academies here, the application process is kind of, what's we're, kind of tight trying to get into those programs. And so we align ours with those same application processes. So we are out there as well, but it's through, it's on our school websites, it's through an Achievable Dream website and so forth as well, and also ran through Virginia Beach City Public Schools Media Department.
Thank you very much. Very informative answer.
Thank you. I can talk about Achievable Dream all night, so you might want to cut this mic off.
All right, Mrs. Anderson, and then Mrs. Melnick.
So I've been a supporter and advocate for Achievable Dream ever since its inception in Virginia Beach, and I'm proud of the accomplishments that we've made so far with getting it off, getting it started and getting where we are with it now. But my question has to do with advanced classes. And so I always, when we first started talking about it, the secondary students being at Lynn Haven, I thought it was good that they would be First Colonial, close to First Colonial. And I know that we talked about them being a part of the athletic program at First Colonial. But what about, you know, advanced classes that might not be offered in Achievable Dream? Would they also be allowed to, say, participate in some of the advanced classes at FC? Would they go there personally? Would you, or would you just plan on doing that virtually? Or?
So, yes, our goal, primary goal, is one to give students the high school experience that they would have at any other high school in Virginia Beach. So that means they should have access to every single advanced and AP course that is offered within the division. We're still working through, and with COVID, that is one reality that we now can see that we can offer a virtual opportunity. We are still in works with teaching and learning to make sure that all of those opportunities are afforded. We know that with ninth grade, we just finished staffing, and we know that we have the opportunity to offer advanced courses to all of our students based on their course selections for next year, and we continue, we will continue that process throughout the next four years.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Mrs. Melnick.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for this. This was really great. And as the partner for the C-Tech and Achievable Dream School, this just makes me so proud, and I'm just proud that Achievable Dream is part of the VBCPS family and that we share the same vision, which is to love and value our students every day. So thank you so much for that. And it's so evident through that presentation just how important relationships and communication are, and this was really beautiful, and I'm really excited for the forward progression with this. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one thing to Ms. Anderson's question. A goal of Achievable Dream is to have students graduate with advanced academic diploma. And so when you look at the data, please know that we will make sure that we meet the individual needs of our students as well as challenging them academically. So we will not have any student lack for the opportunity to participate in honors classes. And even if they don't want to, we're going to recruit them and support them, and so that they understand that is a goal for us first and foremost. They are college-bound students, but we also have other pathways should they choose not to go to college, but that first and foremost is our number one goal.
And I was gonna say, also, in addition to that, with our partnership with FC, if there are courses that we're unable to offer within the Achievable Dream High School community, we are working through partnering with them for certain classes, if we can't offer them virtual or in-person at FC.
Mrs. Felton.
Thank you, Chair Ryan. My goodness, look how far we've come. Mr. Blake, Mr. Milton, Ms. Bowser, me, this, we have come from the community, from the faith base, from the civic leagues, having those deep conversations. And I remember my first visit with you over Newport News as a community member visiting there. And look how far we've come. I'm so proud of the work that you've done. And I guess, Mr. Milton, I'm going to have to share myself now over at the Lynn Haven as well. I'm looking forward to all the other things. One of my questions is, is tennis still the eye focus, main focus for this particular academy? I knew that that's the foundation of it. So what are we doing about it? Is that still a part of the academy?
Yes, at the elementary level, tennis is still the main focus. At the middle school, our students are able to participate in all middle school athletics through the city and high school. We'll be the same exact way. They'll be able to participate now in all, any athletic sport that is provided by First Colonial.
Okay, great, thank you.
Absolutely.
I know one of your main things for the Achievable Dream are your field trips. So how did you all manage your field trips during the virtual situation that we were in? Just like to hear about what you did.
Absolutely, absolutely. So field trips, as you said, are definitely a main focus for us. At the elementary level, we were still able to do those virtually. We brought in, had some onsite experiences where they were able to connect with some people, and so we are still able to go on a great amount at the elementary level. You want to talk about the next?
And the same thing with the middle school. I feel, as you all know, teachers have been extremely creative during this time, and we saw that with the Achievable Dream member staff. They took the opportunity to really expose students to even beyond Virginia Beach because we have the opportunity to see different things and go different places with connections they made, and I reached out in order to have virtual field trips for students.
And just my last statement, I'd just like to say that your graduating students, they are testament to your program, and I get the opportunity to see them when they come back to speak at the events that you have. And I'm just excited about those lawyers that come back, the PhDs that come back, the professors that come back to speak on behalf. Thank you so much for all that you're doing. I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Riggs.
I have no questions. I just have accolades. I am, I've been so supportive of this program since before I got on the board as a teacher and when it was presented with our previous superintendent. I remember us talking about it and discussing it, and I was so excited for it. So you guys are doing a fantastic job. I'm always impressed with what's done, and I'm so glad Virginia Beach has joined this opportunity and that we are expanding. So thank you so much. It's a super job.
Thank you all. We just, again, on behalf of Achievable Dream Incorporated, just want to really say thank you all for the amazing partnership that we have formed over the years. It really is a village growing our Dreamers. And so please, please put on your calendar June 2025. We expect all of you all to be at our first graduation. So thank you all for your support.
So before we wrap up, I, you're not going to get away without my chance.
Oh, trying to see everybody.
I'm a former, I'm a former Bluefish mom, Lynn Haven Middle School, and I had the honor of serving on the Ad Hoc Committee along with Mrs. Anderson, Mrs. Felton, Mrs. Weems was involved at the early go. And for the public's benefit, a quick recap, the original memorandum of understanding only extended through fifth grade. So that was the main charge of the committee at the time, the plan moving forward for middle and high school. And you've all, you've mentioned partnerships a few times, and just sitting in those committee meetings and also appreciating outside of the committee meetings themselves, the work and the communication between Dr. Spence and Lee Reland specifically to keep that on moving. It was a good, at least a year-long process, if not longer, and the committee was chaired by Dan Edwards, our former school board member. And so it's just, here we are. So at the time, you know, we were all set to send them to middle school, and we did. And now here we are three years later. And, you know, with the pandemic, just the fact that everything has gone full steam ahead and now ready for high school. And, and as you said, too, I mean, there is always an upside. So the virtual experience that the teachers have gained to provide that added flexibility with regard to the advanced classes at First Colonial, whether they'll be attending in person or virtually or some combination of both, it's just all great. So thank you all for being here with us today.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So now we can welcome Dr. Dawn Robertson, our Chief of Schools, and Mr. Jack Freeman is here today also, our Chief of Operations, and to give us an update on the next school year.
All right, so I'll wait for just a minute till we can pull up the presentation. Okay, so good afternoon, Chairwoman Ryan, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. The purpose of this presentation is to provide an update on the upcoming class of 2021 graduation plan, share additional planning information for next year, and to update you on vaccination plans for students. Joining me tonight, as Chairwoman Ryan mentioned, is Jack Freeman, our Chief Operations Officer. As you can see, this afternoon's presentation covers several items that are included here on the slide, and I'll give you a moment to review those. In our last meeting, I shared our recommendation to host a class of 2021 graduation ceremonies for all 11 of our traditional high schools plus Green Run Collegiate outside at the amphitheater. At the time, we had not started the contact, contract process, so I was reluctant to share that this plan was the plan. I can now share that we have had subsequent meetings with Live Nation and have the dates, times confirmed, and a contract is in progress. What is left to be decided is the number of tickets that will be given to each graduate. As you heard last week, Governor Northam signaled that should COVID vaccinations increase and cases decrease, he would be eliminating all health and safety mitigations on June 15th with the exception of wearing a face coverings. This could potentially mean we could see closer to 4,000 under the canopy versus the 1,800 we are planning for based on current physical distancing restrictions. Currently, my team is working with Live Nation staff to develop two options so that as we approach June 15th, we can be prepared to provide graduates with additional guest tickets. At this point, we're working on developing a communication plan and schedule that'll be ready by June 1st. In the meantime, we are fingers crossed that cases continue to go down and vaccinations continue to go up, therefore allowing for the lifting of additional restrictions on June 15th. So more to come on that. Right now, we know every graduate's parent will be provided with two tickets. We're hoping that number can increase if our circumstances continue to improve. On April 29th, we released a statement explaining our use of Virtual Virginia as our fully virtual learning option for next year. We supported this with FAQ and series of evening sessions to help parents take the pre-enrollment survey. Over the first three evening sessions last week, we had over 250 parent participants. Our final session is this Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And in a moment, I'll share data as of yesterday in terms of parent responses. Before sharing this, I need to reiterate the purpose of the survey. Parental responses from the survey will trigger critical school actions and decisions. When the survey closes on May 16th, school staff will begin contacting parents who selected the Virtual Virginia option for their student. It is in this conversation between a school staff member and a parent, when the parent will be asked to make a final decision as to whether they want face-to-face next year or whether they want virtual learning. This decision will then trigger further school actions. Parents who confirm their interest in Virtual Virginia will result in the school removing their student from face-to-face course registration, and it will result in parents be given assistance in registering their students in to Virtual Virginia. Again, we don't want to have kids registered in two spaces, so we have to pull them out of their current face-to-face course registration so that they can then enroll in the Virtual Virginia piece. And we anticipate these conversations are going to continue through the end of the school year. Concurrently, parents with children who do not currently attend Virginia Beach City Public Schools may register their child in Virginia Beach City Public Schools for next year, and then they can select if they want to participate in Virtual Virginia, and I think that many will. And finally, it's important to note that the registration deadline for Virtual Virginia to begin the school year is July 15th, so parents need to keep that date in mind. And now let's look at some of the data. So this is a partial piece of a chart that we have, and I just want to explain to you what we're collecting. You'll see in the first column, the groups, and I've highlighted some of the groups. And then going across the top, F to F, F to F is face-to-face, VVA is Virtual Virginia, and those are the raw numbers. So for all students, 14,512 people have responded they want face-to-face, 968 have noted they want Virtual Virginia, 49,893 haven't responded. We'll talk more about that in a moment. We have 65,373 students currently in our database. This represents that 93.75% of our respondents so far have chosen face-to-face, 6.25% have chosen Virtual Virginia. And then you've got the selection percentages. So just let me go over a couple more pieces there. If you look under the Virtual Virginia column, you'll note that we have a range from 18.98% for our African-American group of respondents, all the way down to 2.47% for our Caucasian group. We have 8.89% of our respondents are special education students. And we're looking at this information because it really allows us to dig deeper into what we might need for next school year and help us better appropriate resources or plan to appropriate resources. Now, what's not pictured here is that we have this information for every school in the division by every grade. So my team is aware of every school, every grade, every subgroup of how many parents at this point have indicated they want face-to-face or they want Virtual Virginia. So let's go back and look at that number again of 49,893. Now, that could make you go, hmm, that's not good. No one's responding. However, we have made it clear to parents that if you don't reply to the parent, to the survey and parent view, the default is you're going to be face-to-face. So I anecdotally ran into a neighbor the other day, and we were talking about this, and I said, well, make sure you fill out the survey. And he's like, why? I want face-to-face. I said, well, it'd be nice for you to tell us that, but didn't you say that if we don't fill it out, it's a default to face-to-face? And I was like, well, yeah, you're right. So we can't assume that 49,893 is the actual number because it could be that parents are like, okay, I want face-to-face. The default is face-to-face. I'm not going to take the time to go in and take the survey. So I think that's important for us to recognize. And as always, this survey closes May 16th, and then actions will continue, and we'll provide further updates to you and for the next board meeting. So now, if we could, let's move our attention to planning for school year 21, 22. And I thought I'd start with three key commitments, just to make this crystal clear. Dr. Spence has said this repeatedly, and we're putting it in writing again, we are committed to five days of in-person learning to begin next school year, period. We're committed to providing a fully virtual option, which is Virtual Virginia, and in-person learning options for all students who choose one or the other. learning options for all students who choose one or the other. And we're also committed to a full range of extracurricular activities at middle school and at high school. It was clear this year that not having middle school sports was a challenge. It was the right decision, but we've learned enough this year that we feel like we can uh, have middle school sports next year. So those are commitments that we are making today. In terms of planning, we're looking at two scenarios. And our first scenario is where our collective hope lies for our students, our staff, and our community, and that is we open schools without physical distancing requirements. Wearing of masks, hand washing, and frequent cleaning, I think, is just good practice, whether it's wearing a mask, I mean, I know that's debatable to some people, but hand washing and frequent cleaning is always a good practice. So as, as long as we're not opening with physical distancing requirements, we're going to be in great shape, we're hoping for that. The second option is we open with physical distancing requirements similar to what we have now. So let's dig a little deeper on what have each, what each of these means. So if we open without physical distancing requirements, five days a week, in-person learning, we've got a fully virtual option through Virtual Virginia, a full slate of extracurricular programming at middle school and high school. Again, as Dr. Spence mentioned repeatedly earlier in the year, we're going to, middle school is going to return to their block and/or bell schedule that those schools followed in 2019, 20. High schools are going to return to the AB schedule, although there will be some four-by-four options sprinkled in where it is most appropriate and where those courses make the most sense. But it is primarily an AB schedule, which is where they were two years ago. If we have to open with some physical distancing requirements, as we mentioned before, all schools are still going to be open five days a week for in-person learning. Now, to do that, you've got to take a look at the asterisk. And the asterisk means we may, it may require additional learning cottages. So right now, Mr. Freeman has been working with his group, Tony Arnold, identifying learning cottages we can get and put in place so that we can have all kids in who want to be in school five days a week, so that space is not a constraint as it was this year. We may have to redeploy some staff to accommodate lower class size requirements. And so let me explain what that means by redeploy staff. We've given our allocations out to each school. If a school next year, let's say, has 80% of their kids who are going to come back face-to-face, and 20% of their kids are going to do Virtual Virginia, technically you could say they're overstaffed. And a neighbor's school down the street has 95% of their kids face-to-face, and 5% of their kids virtual learning, their, their staff could be stretched. So when I say redeploy staff, we may loan some teachers from School A to School B next year to ensure that class size across all of our schools is appropriately distributed. We won't know what that looks like, and we won't know what that looks like probably till late August. But we're committed to five days a week, and being committed to five days a week may mean we have to redeploy our staff a little bit. It also may mean that we still are going to need, in some instances, teachers to teach concurrently. Special education, ELL, 504, those could be some situations where Virtual Virginia's not a great option for them, they're better served in, um, a different setting, they want virtual, we'll try to work it out with them, it could end up in, involving concurrent instruction. If we do that, we still have funds available to pay staff for concurrent instruction. Again, we won't know what that looks like and who that entails until later in August. But we want to minimize concurrent instruction to the greatest extent possible. It, it worked for our teachers, it's a lot of work. And without having Mondays next year, um, the additional planning time that goes with that, we, we really don't want to add that burden to teachers' plates. We're still going to have a fully virtual option. We could have a reduced slate of extracurricular programming. Right now, in our varsity sports, they're playing it, their season's at 60%. So if they had 20 games, 60%, they have 12 games. So reduced means you just, your season's been reduced, and that'll be in conjunction with decisions made at the Virginia High School League. For middle school, we still want to have middle school sports, but it could result instead of having eight games in middle school, maybe you only have five games in middle school, because we still want to offer something for our middle school athletes. Our schedules at middle school and high school, well, as they were before, they'll return to block or bell for middle school and high school, or return to AB with some four-by-four options sprinkled in. So really, the only difference between the two scenarios is we may need some additional learning cottages, we may have to redeploy staff, and we may need to engage some teachers with concurrent instruction, and we may have to reduce our slate of extracurricular activities. At this time, I want to turn it over to Mr. Freeman.
Hello.
Hello. Thank you, Dr. Robertson. As you know, school bus transportation affects all scenarios. This past year, we were responding to a pandemic throughout the course of the year, and transportation successfully supported the schedule that you see here, which included Option 1, students four days a week, and special education students five days a week. We successfully integrated face-to-face instruction for ATC, TCEC, and the Governor's School. We also supported after-school activities, including team sports, and SOOL, and PSAT, and other testing. This was accomplished with a school day that started at 7:20 for high schools and ended for middle schools at 4:30. Planning for next year's school year, the greatest challenge is our shortage of bus drivers. Now, I know that you have heard us talk about our shortage for years, and transportation has normally been able to make adjustments and keep a normal schedule while dealing with moderate shortage of drivers. However, next year will be different because of the magnitude of the shortage. We project that we will be over 100 bus drivers short for next school year. One thing to also keep in mind, in addition to that shortage, transportation also has to manage a daily absentee rate for bus drivers, on average, of 45 drivers a day. HR has been very focused on this situation and has been pulling out all the stops in an attempt to hire more drivers, and this will continue. However, the hiring process alone is no longer a satisfactory solution to our bus driver shortage, and we must create a plan with the resources that we can reasonably project will be available. With that in mind, from a transportation standpoint, a 7:30 start for the day and a 4:30 end of the day, the same as this year, was preferable and would have saved on the order of 75 buses and drivers. However, that late start and dismissal has a substantial impact on our middle schools. So we prioritized earlier departure from middle schools and made other modifications. We were able to shift the end of the date to 4:15 with the schedule that you see here, which includes the following adjustments. Next year's zero-bell transportation will be suspended with plans for virtual instruction to compensate. Academy buses will also be used to transport in-zone students. Double-back runs will be scheduled for all schools. Operating times for ATC, VOTEC, and Brock Center have been adjusted to allow more off-bell shuttling. Additional white activity buses were purchased for middle school transportation, and we are keeping a close eye on bus capacity and distancing. Finally, in order for transportation to accomplish this plan, parents will need to sign up for transportation by July 14th for regular education students and July 15th for special education students. This will be an incredibly complex challenge, and transportation will need every bit of that time to develop the routing. All right, I'd, I'd like to finish up with a more near-term planning effort. We were recently approached by the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health about offering vaccination clinics in our high schools. The expressed intent was to improve access to the vaccine, including for students in high schools located in some of our more vulnerable populations. For a student to get vaccinated at school, parents must provide parent signature consent for students under the age of 18. Again, this is voluntary, and it's up to the parent to provide consent. This plan has been approved by our legal experts, and risk management has shared the plan with our insurance carrier. There have been no objections, liability is covered for, for both Virginia Beach Department of Public Health and for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Let me emphasize this upfront, this plan is for high school students only. It is intended to serve both Option 1 and Option 2 students at their home school. These clinics are intended to be turnkey Virginia Beach Department of Public Health operations. All vaccinations will be delivered by Virginia Beach Department of Public Health provided professionals. At this time, our nurses, nurses are not intended to, to deliver shots, but they will monitor our students in the waiting area. All other functions of a regular vaccination clinic are being covered, including emergency medical services support for the rare case of an adverse reaction. Here's the schedule that was published last night, and notice that only high schools are scheduled. Each high school has two days, one for the first shot and one for the second shot 21 days later. All vaccinations will be with the Pfizer vaccine, which is the only vaccine authorized for those under the age 18 currently. Currently, students aged 16 and older can receive Pfizer, and the FDA announced authorization for those 12 and older last night. There are a couple more steps that need to be taken before that group can receive the vaccine, but we expect by the time that we have our first high school clinics that students 12 and older will be authorized to receive the vaccine. Virginia Beach City Public Schools will be providing access to gyms on the scheduled day and tables and chairs. We're also managing the consent process. The last vaccines given for bus riders, so the schedule will run from 8:00 to 2:30, last vaccines for the bus riders will be at 2:20 so that they can catch their buses home, and there's a period from 1:30 to 2:30 to be able to catch Option 2 students and give them some flexibility in their schedule. And for non-bus drivers, or bus riders. All right, so here's some key points to review about what I just shared with you regarding the vaccination. These vaccinations are optional, and they require parental consent. This plan is for Option 1 and Option 2 high school students at their home school. Virginia Beach Department of Public Health is planning on delivering all the vaccinations, and our nurses will do the monitoring, and emergency medical services will be available. So that's a brief overview of the plan. I'd now like to introduce Dr. Jaberry, the Chief Deputy Commissioner of Public Health and Preparedness, who is with us tonight via Zoom. Uh, Dr. Jaberry, is there anything that you would like to add or share with the school board?
Thank you. My sir, just a quick hello to answer any cert, any questions. We appreciate, uh, this opportunity to be able to provide vaccinations to our school-age children. As, as all of you know, that COVID-19 has particularly impacted those who are older in our community and who are immunocompromised, and as we have had successful vaccination campaigns in ensuring, uh, those individuals are vaccinated, we're now seeing the disease really being spread by younger, healthier adults, and particularly when it comes to the teens, as many of them may be infected, barely know it, have very little symptoms, and so they may not necessarily be the ones who experience the most severe symptoms, but are actually, um, spreading that to faculty, staff, or, um, loved ones at home. So we feel that this effort will not only protect the students, staff, and faculty of the Virginia Beach City Public Schools, but it's really a great step in helping curb the spread of this illness even more, um, across the city and in the county. So, uh, it is really a pleasure to, to have this partnership. The Virginia, uh, Beach, uh, Department of Public Health will coordinate all of the vaccinations. Uh, we may use some of the additional reinforcements from National Guard, some of our local healthcare providers, and in addition to the Medical Reserve Corps to, to actually deliver the vaccines, but that will be, um, as mentioned, a core responsibility for the Health Department, and we appreciate the healthcare professionals in the schools, um, assisting with the consents and, and certainly answering any of the questions, um, that they may have. So we are anxiously awaiting the ASAP meeting tomorrow. Um, so the FDA extended the emergency use authorization of this vaccine to 12 years plus. Um, so what will happen tomorrow is that, um, the infection control docs and our, and our national experts will be meeting, and CDC has already scheduled an evening call for, uh, health departments and, and main stakeholders to let us know what will come of that meeting. We all anticipate that the CDC will go ahead and support the extension of the use of the Pfizer vaccine to down to the age of 12. Again, right now, it's currently, um, been approved for 16 and above. Um, we do expect to get that, um, approval tomorrow, and so we have been working very closely with the school system, um, and already the forms that have been shared with the parents allow for that, um, consent to occur for the younger children as well, should they wish to choose this opportunity. I want to make it clear that there are still many other opportunities within the community, um, at the convention center, at pharmacies, some of our providers to get the vaccine, but we simply see the efficiency and, and the ability to vaccinate many, many students through this combined collaborative with the school system. Um, and again, appreciate all of the city's support, the school system's support, um, and we believe it will be a tremendous success. Certainly happy to answer any questions, if there are any, about the vaccinations. Thank you.
Welcome, Dr. Carolyn Rai, here, School Board Chair. So I, that offer is extended to all my colleagues while the good doctor is with us. Or also, we have Mary Shaw here with us, welcome.
Just appreciate the effort. It's awesome.
Can I take the opportunity to ask Ms. Shaw maybe to, uh, to volunteer some information about our nurses and, and their role, and just so that we can, you know, understand and appreciate their, their role in, in, in this process? I heard some monitoring, but if you could elaborate a little more?
Um, good evening, everyone. Um, our nurses will play a, a key role in this. Uh, the first thing that they will do is when the consents are returned, and they will be hard copy consents signed by the parents. In our work group, we decided that was the best route of accountability. Uh, they will review the consents, uh, with guidelines from my office to ensure, um, the best way to make sure we're getting all the information we need. There's a pre-vaccination checklist included with that, that the parents will also, uh, complete. Uh, the students will not receive the vaccine unless that piece is completed. The second part is going to be, after the student receives the vaccine, they'll go into the observation area, which will be part of the gym. EMS will be there. Um, I will probably have about four nurses there, uh, in that area. It will not be the primary school nurse. The primary school nurse will be running the clinic, uh, because we'll have students attending school during the day. Uh, they know the kids best, um, the school nurses, they know how they kind of respond, uh, and, and they're really prepared for this also, because they have gone through the vaccinator training also with the Health Department. So we're ready. Uh, we think it's important. It's going to be even more important next year when, uh, the kids, uh, get back to more normalcy in, in schools and, and being protected, and it's a great contribution to the, um, the public and our community, uh, with COVID, uh, with the uncertainty of what could happen with, uh, the virus itself and, and how it could impact our kids. So I'm thankful to Dr. Jaberry. He's come down from, uh, BDH up at Richmond. He's has a lot of hats, but he's our acting medical director. Uh, he's been amazing, uh, working with our public health team and with the school system and with this work group. So I'm thankful to him also.
Well, thank you. That was quite complete. Okay, Mrs. Franklin, then Ms. Owens.
I just have a quick question about, um, we have had some emails, and I, I think that this is a great idea personally, but, um, we've had some emails about concerns, uh, regarding privacy for the students who do and do not want to get vaccinated. Um, do we have any, um, procedures in place to ensure that they have privacy about their decision to, to, to get the vaccination or, um, how, how that will all work?
When you talk about any type of treatment or healthcare in a school setting, we'll follow the similar way that we do that. Uh, there won't be any conversation, uh, in the classrooms or sharing of information outside of, of the vaccination area, um, in, in a practical way. Will a student walk down to the vaccine clinic? That's no different than when a student comes down to the clinic, uh, for a treatment or medication. We can eliminate all that part, but I mean, as far as the standards that we practice for health information and protection, uh, that'll apply with the vaccination process.
Okay, Ms. Owens.
And this is probably not so much a question about the current, uh, high school, uh, vaccination opportunity, um, but more so, do we have any plans? but more so, do we have any plans for possible middle school options as we move into the summer or prior to the next school year, starting with the expectation of the vaccine age coming down?
Yeah, so conceptually, yes. Is there any active planning? No. Because this is so, I mean, it was a week ago where we started this conversation. So, conceptually, there is a thought of how do we effectively keep the vaccination process going over the summer, but there hasn't been any detailed planning because we're working on this plan right now. But that question's a valid question. It's out there, and we've got a good partnership with the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, and we'll work through it.
Great. Thank you.
And we'll give you an update if and when we get to that point.
Perfect. Appreciate that.
Mrs. Manning.
Thank you. I have several questions, but I'll start on the vaccine topic since that's where we are right now. And I also share Ms. Franklin's question, because we have gotten some concerns from parents regarding the privacy issues. There could be peer pressure regarding getting or not getting the vaccine. So, perhaps this could be a question for our attorney as well. This is a medical procedure, so are we bound by any privacy restrictions on that? And then the second part of that question is, if a student were to get an adverse reaction to the vaccine and have complications, can the school system be held liable?
First question having to do with the medical records. Medical records.
Students are covered under FERPA. I hear a lot of people throwing out HIPAA. HIPAA applies when a medical provider is providing services. We are not providing the services. That is the Health Department handling it. But what we know about it is protected by normal FERPA regulations for confidentiality for students. I have discussed with them my concerns about making sure that we are not, we're careful in how we're dealing with students, that students are not being pressured to do the vaccinations and how we put that information out. We discussed that when they were developing the program. The second point adds to liability. The Health Department is putting out the vaccinations, just like we did with our employees for the clinics. There are a lot of immunity issues out there having to deal with it, but it would go to the Health Department and putting it out, and the normal protections that would apply to the vaccinations apply. I don't see us having any liability for this particular vaccination attempts that we're doing with our students.
Thank you.
Ms. Rye, do you want me to continue with my questions or?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, well, first, I would also like to recognize and thank Dr. Robertson and his team for their detailed presentation on the different scenarios. Not only did you bring us scenarios, you're also bringing us solutions that you are working on the implementation of those solutions. So, I'm very thankful for that. It sounds like you're being very proactive and being ready for multiple scenarios. So, thank you so much for that. So, my next question is regarding transportation, Mr. Freeman. I share that those concerns regarding bus drivers is a huge concern, and I know that we're short of workers across the nation due to the government benefits paying more than our private businesses and even our government organizations can pay. I hope that they will get that rectified soon, but it's going to be impactful on our division this fall. I know in some school districts, a lot of parents drive their students to school. Have you given thought to asking parents and letting them know our situation? Asking them if they would be willing to drive their children to school, letting them know that we need their help? And then the second part to that is, I know in the past, there are principals who discourage parents from driving because that does create kind of a traffic jam. So, if we are in this situation, hopefully, we will have principals who are supportive of parents driving rather than discouraging.
Yes, ma'am, and your point. And regarding encouraging parents to drive, that's very similar to what we did at the beginning of last year, and we will look at that to be able to help ease our burden as well. And to your point, if there are parents that are interested in driving kids for the school system, we are happy, and we can connect them with HR to be able to do that, and we can do that in a broader scale, but as you also, like on yellow school buses. But we also have vans that transport kids on a smaller scale when you have runs that can be supported by a van, and they can be hired to be able to do that job as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mrs. Williams.
Yes, I was going to also bring up trying to get more parents, guardians, grandparents to take their kids to school, like some big media blitz. We need your help, because this could, you know, everything revolves around the big yellow cheese, is what a principal told me years ago, all scheduling. And so, just, yeah, like if we could do a media blitz, because I know, just, you know, I will bus stop, there's seven kids, and, you know, I'm not sure how it works, but like if two parents would say, yeah, we'll take these children, or all the parents would say, we'll take these children, does eliminating those seven help in the overall picture? I'm assuming it does. So, I think just a huge media reach out to parents, because I know that the people in my neighborhood would be more than willing to pitch in and take the extra 20 or 30 minutes it takes to take their child to school, so.
Absolutely, and every little bit helps.
Yeah, so if we could get that out really soon and bunches of times and plead for help, I think that our folks will step up. So, with the driving of a van, do you have to have the same? This, yeah.
It does not require a commercial driver's license, so CDL is not required to drive a van.
You just have to have a regular driver's license?
I don't know what the exact standard is, but it is not a commercial driver's license.
Because I used to own a 15-passenger van that I drove my kids around in, and I didn't need anything extra.
Standard license, but they'll require some safety training.
Okay, that's good to know. Okay, we'll have to, okay. So, we need some more van, we need some van drivers out there. All right, with the, okay, so this is a Virtual Virginia question. So, Virtual Virginia uses their own teachers, and so, and they don't offer special education. So, our special education classes, our special education teachers will be teaching, handling all the course requirements of the special education student. So, I guess I need you to show me how that works. So, I'm a student, I have IEP, but I want to choose Virtual Virginia. So, how is that Virginia Beach Special Education teacher going to teach me? Because I'm not going to be able to get it from Virtual Virginia. Because does that mean that a lot of our special education teachers are going to be teaching virtually or concurrently? How is that going to look?
So, it's a big question, and the answer to the question is, Virtual Virginia is able to accommodate students in some capacity. So, it depends on the accommodations that the student has. They are able to provide students with additional time, to provide students with additional questions for support. They are able to provide students with like read aloud accommodations and things of that nature. For specialized services, we are responsible for supporting those students there, and it's highly dependent upon the student's schedule, and the determination is made by the IEP team. So, those students who receive special education services at the IEP meeting, it will be determined whether Virtual Virginia would be able to best support their needs. And if not, then we will have to provide a comparable virtual service, virtual learning opportunity for those students. And that does mean that we will work very closely with our schools, very closely with our teachers, very closely with our special support services to make sure that those students who do choose the virtual learning option get the services that they need. I do want to reiterate though, as Dr. Robertson shared, we want our students here face-to-face five days, and we are communicating that to our families and to our students, that the best way in which we can serve all students, whether they receive special support services or not, that we want to serve them in the face-to-face setting. But we had a huge meeting today to talk about the best way in which we are going to support those students with disabilities through Virtual Virginia, as well as if they stay with us face-to-face.
Okay, all right, and the same, I guess, more maybe at the elementary level, you know, the guidance, as far as counseling, I'm sorry, not guidance, school counselors. But I guess at all level, how would a Virtual Virginia student access any of our counseling for whatever reason that the student needs?
So, I'm glad you asked that question. So, one of the, and I want to clarify that, those students who do choose to participate in 100% virtual learning will do so via Virtual Virginia. That does not mean that we're transferring all responsibility of providing support to our students to Virtual Virginia. We will have school-based counselors that will work directly with those students who choose 100% virtual learning. We are requesting some additional support via CARES funding to support having some additional counseling services and not to take away from those counselors who are working directly with our students that are face-to-face. We also have mentors to work directly with Virtual Virginia students and their families, and they will work closely with Virtual Virginia staff to monitor student academic progress, as well as their social and emotional well-being. And Virtual Virginia teachers, although they are not connected to Virginia Beach City Public Schools, they do make connection and contact with Virginia Beach City Public School staff. So, we work closely hand-in-hand and identify the opportunities of need for students and their families, and should a student or a family need support from our school counselors or social workers or other support services that we have in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, they absolutely have an opportunity to do that.
All right, okay, I think that's all. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson, then Mrs. Melnick.
My, I'm not sure who can answer this, but it has to do with for next year and possibly for this year, but it has to do with masks, mask-wearing. So, who makes the decision on whether we continue wearing masks indoors and outdoors? Who makes that decision? And for example, you know, we've gotten so many emails from parents begging us to relax the mask issue for outdoors. So, I'm concerned about, are we, I mean, I know we don't have any control in some cases over masks. I mean, I guess the governor or CDC or somebody makes this decision. Can you clarify that for me and why it is that we, that students have to still wear masks outside? And then how about next year, because this has to do with next year? Are we still going to be required for that, or do you not know? Can you elaborate on that, please?
When it comes to our prevention mitigations, mask is probably one of our strongest prevention mitigations. When we brought the kids back in, we increased the number of days that they were here. It was really important. Our local public health department supported it. It's in the different guidances to continue with the mask-wearing in the school building itself. You know, we use three feet of separation. So, we're going to continue wearing the mask indoors. Our outcomes have been awesome as far as any type of prevention of community spread. Remember, we're just dropping from substantial community spread in our area and starting to move downward, probably the last two or three weeks. Now, as far as outdoors go, I know the governor came out and spoke about relaxing the outdoors, the mitigation, but currently, physical distancing is still important outdoors for us to allow our kids to have some type of a good experience out in PE, outdoors, in the playground areas, in those different places. The ability for us to keep that physical distancing insured is not there. So, that's why we've continued the mask-wearing. We'll continue the mask-wearing for sure through the remainder of the school year. Do we look at prevention mitigations and new information and what's coming down to make decisions on what we're going to do next? Yeah, continually. We're always looking at it and seeing, can we, how can we do this in a different way? So, just to let the people that are listening know, we're paying attention to all of it. We're paying attention to what the governor's saying. We're paying attention to public health. We also have a real strong partnership with the public health team, with the epidemiologists and the folks over there, with Dr. Jaberry. So, if we get a recommendation to make a shift on that, it will definitely go to the leadership in the school division to review. And we're not just talking about a shift in mitigation. We're talking about our ability to implement the mitigations in a safe way.
So, you're saying that there is a possibility that it might be relaxed through someone else?
The two things that need to happen would be the public health guidance from the local public health department would be key. Second would be, how would that impact what we're able to do as a school division? Keep in mind what we're trying to accomplish with the kids and their different programs. And I know it can be confusing to the public, because when the governor comes out and states that it's time for us to look at relaxing masks outdoors, public health is telling us that the research is taking us that direction. Remember, when we're in schools, our standard is a little bit more tighter and a little tougher to implement these changes rapidly. And so, I know that it's difficult when you're hearing from parents. They want that to happen individually, but we're looking at a collective process in the schools. And I know I got a little bit too lengthy, but I wanted to explain that well.
Because we're hearing a lot, and they pointed out that the weather is really hot, the kids are suffering with the masks when it's really hot outside, and the fact that we have allowed sports teams to participate without masks. I know they have to wear a mask when they sit down on the bench, but they actually participated. And in some cases, we had indoor, some indoor sports who participated without masks. Wrestling and basketball, both participated without masks when they were playing. They had to put their mask on when they sat down and weren't, you know, participating. But they're pointing out these things to us, and it's difficult to justify why when, you know, when they go outside for PE and it's, you know, 80, 85 degrees and really hot, and the kids are sweating, and the masks are, at that point, become more prohibitive because they have trouble breathing, they get, they get all sweaty, you know? And so, I understand where they're coming from. So, I just, I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just saying that, you know, this is something that we're hearing a lot of from our parents, so.
I understand, and the one thing I wanted to let you know regarding health and PE, there's a couple things in place. One is if a student feels that they need to relax that mask, they can go to that teacher and they can be separated and be allowed to do that. Second, they're focusing on low exertion-type activities, so that if you're getting information that they're doing high exercise, like you're seeing in the athletic programs, please forward that to me. I can check with that, but that's my understanding of what we're doing currently. If a student has a health issue that they cannot wear a mask for a particular reason, we do have mask exemption physicians form that can be completed. So, we have those three things in place to address the PE situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mrs. Melnick, but first, I want to say, because I asked some pointed questions about this too, and what, I think you spoke to it just now. I mean, I've spoken with other staff about the collective picture, because a basketball team is five or 10 players versus the tens of thousands of students we have. So, while on the surface it seems contradictory, and one is governed by VHSL too, to some extent, I believe, but it's just a difference in numbers in managing a full division of students versus a specific team. Is that part of this too?
Yeah, and you're right in what you're saying. And please note that we meet weekly with our public health team, and we discuss these different changes that are coming and what direction the school division should go in. Currently, the recommendation from local public health is to continue our mitigations.
Okay, and Mrs. Melnick.
Okay, and so as we wrap up our workshop, I just want you to know that tonight I'll be reading the school nurse appreciation resolution, and it will be with deep appreciation to you and our 86-plus nurses. And finally, just as a wrap-up, and maybe we can talk about this during break, but I think it's something we should talk about, especially with transportation here, that because of the gas pipeline hack, I don't know if everyone knows what's going on outside of these walls right now, but there is little to no gasoline left in the city of Virginia Beach. My son is, I have both my sons in Farmville. They said there's no gasoline. My son is, I have both my sons in Farmville. They said there's no gas there. And so that might be a real issue for us in the short term for our bus fleet. And so perhaps maybe after, maybe during our, I don't know if it's going to be able to be addressed in some way, shape, or form.
I can, I can adjust now if you like.
Please.
We're paying very close attention to it. We have a very high degree of confidence that we can make it through Thursday. And we have a, a reasonable degree of confidence that we can make it through Friday. Diesel, we project, isn't going to go as fast as gasoline. The gasoline's going to go quicker. So that being the case, we're, we're monitoring it very closely. And so we're filling up all our vehicles. We're topping them off to make sure that we have flexibility. And we do have some flexibility. I won't go into great detail about what it is. But we'll keep it updated as it goes and we'll stay closely connected with everybody else on, on what the status is. This is something that we can't control, but we can position ourselves as best as possibly can given yet another crisis that we're working through.
And thank goodness, we have virtual options. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all. And I didn't get a chance to officially thank or say goodbye to the good doctor, but if he's offline now, we'll, we'll follow up with our personal thanks. So with that, this workshop is adjourned and we'll be reconvening at six o'clock.